Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. I am Heather Peffley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's May 11th, 2021 work session being conducted remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Council chambers will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this work session is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190 and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this work session. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council, the City Manager, and City Clerk will always be live unless there is an audio disruption. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the work session.
Thank you, Heather. Please take the walk.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
And please state your location.
Here, Manistee, at my house.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaton?
Here, in the City of Manistee.
Mayor Zelinski?
Here, at my house in Manistee.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here, in the City of Manistee.
Mayor Protem Shemansky?
At my home in Manistee, Michigan.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here, at Manistee, at my home.
And Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Here, City of Manistee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Work session. Tonight, public comments on work session related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals be asked if they have a comment or if they're passing. It's very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background. Televisions and all forms of audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person in line. We'll now take public comments on work session related items. And for those who don't have an agenda, the work session items tonight are presentation by Granicus, discussion on Granicus, discussion on residential rental ordinances, and discussion on safe building permits. We'll now take public comments. Heather?
Okay, I see we have two members of the public. I will just call on each of you to see if you have a comment. The first one is Mr. Gavigan. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening. I've got a brief statement I wouldn't mind.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
This is Carrie Gavigan, 381 First Street, Manistee.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd just like to briefly speak concerning the frequency of the city long-term rental inspections. It's been proposed to increase them from the current three-year period to one or possibly even every two years to help combat blight in the city. It's my belief that blights can be reduced by spending more time on the blight and not increasing rental inspections on properties that don't have it. Having to dish out an additional $3,500 or $4,000 for increased inspections, that won't help. That same money could go to, you know, to replacing the heating system or build a new deck. Or for those with blight, maybe they could just buy a dumpster for, you know, with the increased cost. I've talked to a few of the city officials and have been asked to come up with maybe some suggestions, possibly to work with council for a plan of action. I'm asking the council maybe to possibly consider leaving inspections in the current framework until the fall when those of us running businesses have more time. Due to the pandemic and pent-up demand, we're having a crazy, busy year for products and services. There's just simply no time to put into this at this point. Really, that's just about all I really have for now. Just it's time constraints. We're all for the city inspections, but be nice when you fall when we have some time. Thank you. Thanks for your consideration.
And Mr. Ferguson, do you have a comment?
Yes, I agree with, sorry, Theron Ferguson, 510 Fairview Avenue. I agree with what Mr. Gavigan had said. I think both he and I and many of our friends and people that we communicate with who own other rentals just feel like we're racing against the clock to plead with council to just delay on making any quick decisions. I know this is something that you guys have been working on for some time, but we're just hoping that you guys would consider at least maybe meeting with some landlords and talking in person about some ideas that we have as they relate to the rental program. And just, you know, my thought is if there was some way we could wait until the new city manager is appointed and we could maybe have a work session where we could, you know, talk with that candidate to find out what their thoughts are on the current program and any necessary changes. That's all I have.
Mayor, there are no other public comments.
Thank you. We'll move along to the presentation and discussion on Granicus. Bruce McCaskill?
That's correct.
Bruce, how are you here tonight?
Good. How are you?
We're doing well. Thank you.
Perfect. Well, I appreciate you having me on tonight. And I will go ahead and get going in the essence of time. Feel free during this time period. If there's any questions, just interrupt me, stop me. Just let me know. I'll answer all your questions the best that I can. So just to give you some context, so I met with Councilmember Beaton back in November of last year. And we had a good conversation of kind of what's going on with the shortage of the housing stocks, short-term rentals coming in. You know, specifically around maybe some investors that have come in with short-term rentals. So I'm going to provide you some data tonight. I did an update of a poll this morning so I can show you what is actually live this morning, the short-term rentals. And I'll explain how we get that information and then talk a little bit about trends that we've seen going on in the last 12 months with short-term rentals. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Pull this up real quick. Can everybody see my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, perfect. Well, I'm going to go ahead and jump ahead here in the essence of time. I'll just give you a quick background on who we are. So Granicus, I'm with Host Compliance for part of Granicus now. Host Compliance started about five years ago, actually on the West Coast. And back then, there was really no software or platforms out there for identifying short-term rentals. And what I mean by identifying short-term rentals is identifying those hosts of those owners and their addresses and then matching it up with your assessor data. So you know their parcel ID, their lot number, where they're located, and who those owners are. We've grown pretty significantly over the last five years. We're up to about 370 different municipalities throughout the US and Canada. I'll show you who we're currently working with in Michigan. Here's our, we're currently up to about 16 local agencies. Park, Michigan, East Jordan, Ross Common, and then Evoline all just came on last month. They're all new customers. They're actually getting set up and running. And if there's anybody, I will send this deck out. But if there's anybody on here that you'd like to talk to, if you don't have contacts, feel free and let me know and I can get you contacts. So I'll talk a little bit about what we've seen, kind of what happened the last 12 months with short-term rentals. You know, back in March when COVID really came on, you know, a lot of the short-term rental markets were predicted they would go away or go down for a little while. A lot of places had bans in place or temporary bans on short-term rentals. Sorry, jumping ahead here. But across our customers, our 370 customers, March through June, we only saw about a 3% drop. A lot of that had to do with traveling, you know, had medical personnel, businesses that were still out there traveling. And hotels as a whole in 2020 took a drop of about 40 to 60% in occupancy levels. Short-term rentals actually increased quarter over quarter. So going forward from June until last quarter of Q1, we've seen a 10% increase across the board. And the reason behind that, a lot of people that are finally out and getting to travel with their families still feel more secure going to a short-term rental versus maybe going to a hotel where they can kind of feel, you know, from safety reasons and health reasons. So that's kind of the trends that we've seen in the market in the last 12 months with short-term rentals. I'm going to go ahead and show you the numbers that I pulled this morning, but I'll go ahead and explain how we actually get this information. I'm sorry, my screen is jumping around. So we currently are up to about 65 different platforms that we scan that are out there. So everything from Craigslist to Airbnb to international sites as well. We currently capture about 99% of the market. Now Airbnb and HomeAway started their short-term rental platforms about 10 years ago. Airbnb is still by far the largest. They went public in Q4. At one point, it was close to $100 billion valuation. And then a lot of the smaller short-term rental vacation rental platforms are being bought up by online travel agents. Online travel agents are groups such as Expedia, Priceline.com, Booking.com, typically traditionally that work directly with hotels. And especially in the last year, as the hotel revenue started to drop in occupancy levels, they started buying up these short-term rental platforms. So HomeAway and VRBO were bought by Expedia Group. And they're going to merge into a single platform. So HomeAway is going to go away. It's just going to be VRBO going forward. And then Tripping was bought by TripAdvisor. So we're starting to see kind of a trend of these online travel agents buying these smaller companies to bring into their portfolio. So like I said, we do capture up to about 65 different platforms. There's platforms that are relevant in certain jurisdictions. We'll just add them to our scanning. So I'll show you next what I pulled this morning. Pull this up here and I'll explain some of the numbers here because some of it is our language. So this is kind of a snapshot in time. So this was as of this morning, it was actually out there live and for the short-term rental vacation platforms. And that number 102 where it says unique rental units, that's going to be the actual properties themselves. So there was 102 properties online and renting. And then above that, where you see that 162 number for listings, that's going to be the actual advertised site. So HomeAway, VRBO, Airbnb, et cetera. And the reason you'll see a difference in those two numbers is a lot of times those hosts or owners are advertising their house on multiple sites at the same time. So they may have their house listed on Airbnb, VRBO, maybe Tripping at the same time. And that's where you'll get a difference in those two numbers. So I'll take a break for a second, see if there's any questions. Does that make sense on the numbers?
Any questions, council?
I have a quick question. Are you able to break that down to let us know, like, how many of that 102 are condos and waterfront properties?
Yes, actually, I can show you. I'll show you in the next screen. Actually, good question. Go over here. That brings me to the next slide. It's a good point. So I'll kind of break it down here. So the unit types and actual listing types. So I'll start off at the top here with the median nightly rate, which is essentially the average nightly rate. So the average nightly rate being charged by those properties across the border was about $189 per night. If you look to the right, you'll see unit types. So this is a breakdown of partial homes versus entire homes. And this is typically associated with, if you enter ordinance, where they say maybe owner occupied or non-owner occupied. So 94% of those properties that were being rented were running out their entire house. So that's where the owner is not present. So it certainly could be a second home, but also it could be somebody who bought it, you know, as a full-time business or a short-term rental full-time business. 6% were partial homes. That's where the owner is present. So typically running out a room or two, maybe to help, you know, offset their mortgage or help pay for the insurance. But you definitely have a large a large population of entire homes being rented. And then to answer your question, if you look at listing types here to the left, so you have less than 1% right now showing up as condos. 50% were single-family homes and then 49% were multifamily homes. And what we consider a multifamily home is going to be somebody who has maybe, you know, the first level, they're running out completely to, you know, short-term rentals. They have a kitchen, you know, family room, living room. They're running out the entire floor. That would be what we consider like a multifamily home. A single-family home is just a traditional single-family home. Where it says unknown home type at 1%, that could be a condo, a townhouse. It could be an RV, a boathouse, anything that's not traditional, you know, traditional dwelling or property. So any questions on that? Does that make sense? Everybody's good? Okay, perfect. So I'm going to jump into growth, what we've seen over the last year. So we started about four years ago scanning pretty much all the municipalities that are out there and looking really for trends where certain areas, you know, maybe it's by the lakes or the ocean or mountains, see where the trends, where the growth was. This is just showing a snapshot of the same time last year in May, so 2020, and showing the growth of the short-term rentals with inside your jurisdiction. So if you look back on May of 2020, you were right around 59 rental units. And as of today, you're up to 93. So you've had about a 63% year-over-year rental growth. To give you perspective, the national average that we see on average, and this is across the country, is anywhere from 10 to 15%. And we do see growth in 20, 25% in lake communities and coastal communities. But you have had a pretty significant growth, 63% year-over-year. Any, I'll take a break here for a second. Is there any questions on this slide? Nope, everybody's good. Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to go into a demo of our software next year so I can show you the data that we can collect and how we correlate that for you. I'll just talk a little bit about our software, how it's actually, so our software is software as a service. It's completely cloud-based. And then everybody would have, and with Inside of Manistee would have access. So all departments, all personnel, so we don't license it per person or per user. And then we have five different modules with inside of our software. And the reason we do that is because everybody's different when it comes to short-term rentals. We know everybody has different needs. So we don't require that you buy our whole platform upfront. Everything is à la carte. So you can start basically with the module that you need today. And if you have future changes down the road or maybe resource constraints, you can always add the other modules on later on if you need it. So we try to make it really easy to access our software. I'm going to go ahead and jump out here quick into demo and show you exactly what it looks like. So it makes sense. Give me just one second. Okay, it should come up now. Can everybody see my screen? Okay?
We got it.
Perfect, perfect. So I'll go through this. So this is our software. This is what it actually looks like. This is what we call our homepage or dashboard. So when you first log into our software, all the data that we're scanning out there is correlated into this dashboard. So we try to make it really simple and easy to log in and take a quick look at your jurisdiction to see what's going on with short-term rentals. I'll explain really quick how we actually get the short-term rental data and how we match it up with your assessor data. So initially, what we do, like I mentioned before, we'll go out and we're going to scan all the vacation rental platforms that are inside your jurisdiction. And then we're also scanning public sites. One of the examples of a public site would be Zillow, maybe Redfin or Realtor.com. Maybe that host had rented their house in the past or sold their house in the past. And they have photos of inside their house, different type of data points. And then we'd work with the assessor office and we typically get a download of all the housing information. So things such as owner information, parcel ID, lot number. We take all that data that we scanned along with your assessor data and we run it through our software. We use things like artificial intelligence to go through the pictures and big data to come through all the data points that are out there. And eventually we'll come up with what we call a match to your assessor data. And before we give a checkmark on our system that we've positively ID'd and I, an address and match up your assessor data, everything is human verified. So we have about 200 people workforce that we call an analyst. And once our software makes an identification, they're going to go through in the backend and make sure that everything does match up. So that you have the parcel ID, the lot number, and all that information correctly. So that's kind of a high level of how we go through initially and identify those short-term rentals. Any questions on that? Does that make sense? Everybody's good? Perfect. Okay. So I'll show you here. And this is, this can be customized based on what you're looking for. This is kind of a typical dashboard. So this number up here on the top left is number 64. This is not a stagnant number. This number changes in real time. So as we're identifying short-term rentals, these numbers will kind of go up and down. If somebody takes a listing off for a period of time, this number changes quite a bit. And this will be what's going on real time with inside your jurisdiction. If you scroll down here, you'll see a breakdown of listing types. So as you mentioned, single-family home, unknown here would be condos, townhomes, could be an ADU. And over here is the multifamily homes. And then you have a breakdown of entire homes. So somebody's running out their entire house versus a partial home. Over here, we'll have a breakdown of bedrooms and bathrooms. So for example, if you have certain occupancy levels based on maybe sewer requirements or septic or maybe parking, you can see, you know, if this host or that owner is exceeding your occupancy levels based on number of bedrooms of the entire house. And then over here, we have what we call land use compliance. This customer, essentially the land use compliance is hosts that are not registered or have a business license. So for this area, the host has to go through registration process and get their license. So we're able to identify those who are not registered. So you'll see here 60% or 40 of those short-term rentals will be identified are not currently compliant. So they don't actually have a license in place. Just a couple other quick numbers here before I show you what everything else looks like. Minimum night stays, so everything here is running for less than seven nights, so 96%. So true short-term rentals under 30 days. And then up here, you're going to see we do scans daily. So you're going to be able to see trends that go on. So if you have special events, obviously with your seasonality, you're going to be seeing when those spikes and those trends happen. So they can, you know, become more predictable. Now, if we go up to the top here, this is just a simple Google map, which most people are familiar with. And the reason we put it in a Google map is it's interactive. It's easy to use. We identify a short-term rental. We're going to simply put a pin on the Google map of their location. And it can be color-coded. This customer wanted everything in red if they weren't compliant. So they could take a look at the map and see who's not currently registered or doesn't have a business license. Now, this map can go into satellite view down to the street level. So once we've identified a short-term rental, you'll know exactly where they're located. So typically, you know, code enforcement may have to spend time trying to identify them, driving around. So everything is located in this map. So you know exactly where they're located and where they are. Now, each short-term rental, once we identify them, like I mentioned, we put a pin here. I'm just going to show you an example. You can actually click on the pin. It's going to take you directly to that location. So let me jump on here. And this is what we call rental unit record. So with Inside of Rental Unit Record, we're going to have all that data that we scan and store all that information about that listing, that owner, and address on one simple page. So you can see everything. So for example, here, you'll see the address, 8 Water Street, Kettering, Maine. They're currently active. We've identified them. They're not compliant. They don't have a license. And then right here, you'll see listing information. You'll see a breakdown of their advertised numbers and their advertisements. So these are all Airbnb. So this, scroll down here, this must be a multifamily home. Yep, this is a multifamily home. So they're running out separate rooms and they actually have three different rooms that are advertised in Airbnb with inside here. And you can see those listings here. If you scroll down here, we'll show you actually how we matched it up. So, you know, we don't try to do the cloak and dagger. We'll show you, you know, where we match this up, how we match up the assessor data. So you know, from a legal perspective, you know, who that, who that owner is and where they're located. If you scroll down here, you'll be able to see here's the URL. They're listing directly to their Airbnb. They're currently active. You'll see a description of the house. They're running out entire rooms with inside that house. So they have three different, what they're calling apartments, or three different rooms they're renting. Last info captured on May 9th. And then you'll see they're charging 162 a night and then $150 cleaning fee. So once we've identified a short-term rental, what we're going to do is we're going to do screenshots every couple of days. So any changes that host or that owner makes to their listing or their advertisement, we're going to be able to capture that. Let me just show you here. I'll click on this one. So this is just showing an example of a screenshot, which is going to be their full listing. So you'll see a breakdown of information, a breakdown of their calendars, what's been, what nights have been rented. You'll be able to see time and date stamp reviews, all the information about that short-term rental. A typical listing will have about 150 data points. So we're taking all these data points and then putting them inside our system and making them easy to access. Let me go ahead and jump out of here. Over to the right is what we call, over here is going to be our timeline of activity. So by taking these snapshots, we're documenting everything around that short-term rental, that owner. So for example, this host first came on to Airbnb back in 2016. And then you'll see here what we call documented stays. Now documented stays, I'll tell you how we do that real quick. Documented stays are the heavy lifting's done by the providers. So Airbnb or HomeAway, for example, if if somebody wants to leave a review, they have to prove that they actually stayed there. So Airbnb or HomeAway or VRBO will go through that process and identify and make sure they did stay there during that time period. And then they'll let them go ahead and leave a review. So what we're doing is we're scanning the calendars and we're scanning time and date stamp reviews and matching them up. And that's what we call a documented stay. So you can see how many nights have been rented and how many stays they've had through any given time period. So we document this all on the single page here. As you can see, all that activity. Well, I'll be also be able to show you, trying to see if they pulled it off here, when they remove a listing. So for example, they took the listing down on June 12th and they put it back on on the 13th. Other times, yeah, they removed it again on August 13th. But we keep a timeline check here for you of all that information. So you have all that documentation. So that's kind of what we call rental unit record. Everything that's based on that single listing in that host. I'll take a break here for a second. Any, any questions?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Hi, Bruce. It's Linda Beaton.
Yes.
As you're doing this every, every few days, you're checking on the rentals that you already established. Are you, are you capturing new ones that may be joining the market at the same time?
Yes, yes. So we're scanning every day for new ones and then every two days for existing ones.
All right, gotcha.
Does that answer your question? Yes.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Where, where are we, like vacation rental wise, like the number that we have? Where are we in comparison to comparable cities to us?
Sure. So you're pretty comparable. So I'll actually get back to our list here in Michigan. Give me one second. So in Michigan, you can actually tell me who's similar in size to you and I can tell you kind of where they are. Because I work with everybody in Michigan. Is east, let's see, Ross Common, I know Evoline's small. East Shore, any of these areas similar in size to where you are?
How about Charlevoix?
Charlevoix? Okay. Yeah, Charlevoix is very, very similar with short-term rentals. They have about 140, I think, at this point. And you currently have, let's see, about 102. So a little bit more, Charlevoix does. A little bit more. But you're very comparable to a lot of the, you know, the Great Lakes. And I'm comparing that to, you know, the cities and counties in Michigan as well as Wisconsin, the other side of the lake. So very similar in size. Did that answer your question, Miss Sullivan?
How about, yes, yes, it did. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
South Haven?
Yeah.
South Haven? I'll find out for you and let you know. I don't have it off the top of my head. It's been a little while. But I'll be able to, I can find that out for you and then just send it to you if that helps.
That helps.
Perfect, perfect. Okay.
I have one more question.
Absolutely.
If we put a cap on our short-term rentals about, for how many that we have and we give you, we give you that number and say, you know, we want the condos exempt from that. Can you fill in that data and let us know, like, hey, somebody popped on and you're, you're over like what you, what you cap your short-term rentals at?
Sure. So there's a couple of different ways to do that. It's a good question. So let me go back here. Let me go back to the actual software. Just give me one second. Okay, perfect. Can everybody see this? Okay, back on the screen. Okay, perfect. Let me show you. So yes, to answer the questions, a couple of different ways to do that. We have reporting with inside of our system. Let me pull up an example. And this reporting, we don't expect you to go through and try to, you know, do all these search inquiries. So essentially, what happens is if you decide to partner with us, we can, we have what we call a customer service agent that will work with you directly. They're essentially an engineer and they can build these reports out for you. So we can get pretty defined in reporting. So for your question specifically, if you have a limit, right, you're going to be able to see, we can set up certain reports when we hit that limit. You can set up reports and say, I want to see specifically just the housing versus the condos and the townhomes specific to that. You can really go through the reporting and have it built any way you want to get that information. So all those data points are inside of our system. And it's just the way to decipher and see what's important to you. And we can certainly build that out in reports.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no, absolutely. Okay, perfect. I'll show you one quick other thing, but I'll pause. Are there any other questions? I'm sorry.
No. I've got one. I've got one. I'm curious on, it looked like on the, on your, when you were showing the Manistee chart, that a couple of the buildings that were dotted were actually condos. And I'm just wondering how you actually determine whether or not it's a single, you know, again, because if I'm renting an apartment, I could say it's a single house, even though it's part of condominium project. So I'm wondering.
Right.
I'm guessing you haven't done a deep dive into these properties at this point.
Not, not at this point. So that's a good question. So with our software, there's a couple of different ways. So, you know, we'll go through to identify property. We're going to be looking at a lot. we'll go through to identify property, we're gonna be looking at a lot of data and pictures. So for example, if they had their apartment for a long-term rental, or if it was sold in the past, typically, I'm just throwing out examples, um, Zillow, um, Realtor.com, Redfin, right, they keep these pictures and this data pretty much forever, uh, indefinitely, um, out on the web. So it's out there, it's just, this is all public data, you know, it's not, we're not, um, taking any private information. Um, so that's one of the ways we would go through and match it up, so there could be certain architecture, it could be certain furniture, certain things in the room that, you know, that we've seen in the past, we match it up with their rental. That's one way that we can go through and say, okay, this is an actual apartment versus in a house. Um, another way too is when we match up the assessor data, we're gonna go by, you know, what, what they said, um, you know, what they're paying for their property taxes, how they filed, how they, um, registered that property, all that process as well. So we'll be able to see, you know, the address of the owner, where they're located, if it's listed as an apartment, what, you know, they're all that information as well. So kind of two, two different ways to go through that process. Did that answer your question, Michael?
Right, but the point is, at, at this juncture, you have not done any of that, so when you say there's only a few condos, it's only because they haven't reported themselves as, as such. I'm, I'm just curious, because.
Oh, no, yeah, you're correct, yeah, so we're, we're going by what they're advertising, you're correct.
Right, because on your map, I know the couple of the dots, one of them by the, by the bridge, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that's a condominium project there, that those dots appeared, and the same thing down on the riverside, so I'm
Right.
like, and I'm just curious if there aren't, uh, many more than just a couple condos in that, uh, in that criteria. But it's only because you have not done any kind of deep dive at this junct-
Exactly, right. So what I'm showing you today is basically, um, advertisements, listings that are out there, and then the actual rental count. So we can go through and then, um, uh, go through there and see if somebody has multiple listings based on the pictures initially. But like you said, when we get to the point of your assessor data and more information, we're fully running our software, then we're able to decipher that.
Okay, thank you.
Does that help? Yes, okay, perfect. Okay, great, great. Um, so I'll show you, uh, any other questions, sorry? Nope. Okay, perfect. So I'll show you, um, another aspect of our software, we call it compliance monitoring. So once we've identified a short-term rental, if they're not registered or have a license, and you require that with inside your jurisdiction, um, our compliance monitoring makes it really simple to send out a letter, and these letters are really best practice letters, so, um, with inside of our system, we're gonna have templates specific to Michigan, through our other customers, and letters that they have, um, been successful and worked really well for them. So you really don't have to reinvent the wheel. It makes it really simple to get these letters out, to get them through that process of registrations. So I'm just gonna show you an example, so, um, this is the Eight Water Street, so they're not compliant. So you would just click on send a letter, and then it's gonna bring up the templates that, uh, we work with you and your team, so the different templates that we have that are for, you know, first-time no permit, second warning, um, audit letters, just showing you examples. So, um, this would be somebody we identify is not registered, you would just click on first no permit. Now, this letter's gonna have your letterhead, um, in your logo, so it looks like it's coming directly, um, from, from, from your, uh, location, and then the language can be changed around, customized based on, you know, what you're looking at trying to accomplish. But typically, the first letter we'll send out will let them know about the new ordinance, the registration process, um, here's the process you need to go through. We've identified your listing, the advertised number here with Airbnb, and typically give them a timeframe, usually about thirty days from receiving the letter to go through that registration process. Now, this first letter, when you first send it out, typically, um, a lot of the host or owners are gonna say, well, you know, they're sending out letter to everybody. Um, you know, put it in their coffee table, give a little bit of time, and go ahead through that registration process. So what we do is when we send this first letter out, we're gonna attach a second page to that letter. And that second page is gonna be a full-screen snapshot of their location. So the idea behind it is, you know, we, we're not seeing hosts or, um, you know, trying to do the wrong thing, right, it's sometimes procrastination, or just not knowing what to do. So by attaching this second page, it's just letting that host know that, you know, we know you're online, here's your listing, uh, we need you to go through this process of getting registered and do the right thing. So this is just showing an example, I, I live in South Carolina, if I go through a red light, you know, you'll typically get a letter in the mail, you know, with a fine, and then typically a picture of your license plate, it's the same kind of philosophy of just giving a little push to have that host or owner go through that process and do the right thing. Now, these letters, um, typically in our first letter that we send out last quarter with our customers, uh, we had a close to seventy-eight percent compliance, so seventy-eight percent of those hosts went through and got registered. If they didn't, we can send out a second letter, that second letter may have a little bit stronger legal language, maybe it's certified, where they have to sign for it. Um, when we get to our second letter, where the typical upper eighty, upper eighty percentile, lower ninety percentile of complacency of getting those hosts registered. Now, um, the idea behind is make it really simple, you can go through and send a letter, usually in about twenty seconds. And we actually mail the letters out for you, so you have these templates, you would just hit, you know, continue, um, and then that would start the process, it sends it to us, and then we actually mail the letters out for you and do the follow-up. Um, and so the idea behind is make it easier for the staff of having to, you know, bill letters from scratch, to try to see what works, send it amount, you know, obviously going down and mailing the stamps and mailing them out, it's just a way to make that process much easier, more effective. So that's what we call compliance monitoring, I'll take a break here for a second to see if there's any questions.
I, I noticed in your letter, you have, uh, a penalty of up to a hundred and fifty dollars a day. Uh, is that just to kind of get their attention, or is that the average?
Uh, no, so that's specific to that customer, so, um, everywhere's different, so we would work with, uh, your customer success agent is gonna be somebody that works specifically in Michigan. So you would, you, so you could pick their brain and, you know, about what other municipalities you're doing in Michigan, what's been successful. Um, you know, what, what's working. And they can put that letter together for you. So that's kind of the beauty of, right, state and local government plagiarism is, um, you know, the great thing, right, you can kind of repeat what everybody else is doing to make it easier for yourselves. Did that answer your question, Michael, sorry?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. Okay, um, any other questions? So far?
I have one more.
Absolutely, cool.
So when you looked at Manistee, did you just look specifically for short-term rentals or all rentals?
Uh, just short-term rentals.
Okay.
Now, we can, we can, um, we can incorporate long-term rentals, so you can see the difference, so we can identify the long-term rentals as well. But, um, yeah, but our focus is, is short-term rentals, but we, we do have that capability, if you were interested in seeing the housing stock um, of long-term versus short-term, we can identify those for you with inside of our system.
Okay, that might be something to think about at some point.
Okay. A- any other questions?
What is your cost for services?
Sure, we're gonna go there now, so, I knew that was coming up, so, let me go ahead and jump back, so it makes sense, perfect. Let me get on the pricing real quick. So I'll show you how our pricing model works. Okay, so our pricing's pretty simple, it's just a flat rate, and it's based on the time that we partner together. And what I showed you today, the two modules I showed you today, and this is based on previous conversations with, uh, personnel with inside, um, your jurisdiction, um, would be address identification, which is identifying the addresses, all that information, so the whole demo that I showed you will be included with that, and then compliance monitoring, where we send the letters out. And I'll break it down for you, so address identification is forty-five dollars, and that's per listing per year, so I'm gonna jump back here and show you the number of listings that you currently have, so that would be forty-five dollars times that number one sixty-two. And the reason we do address identification by listings is, let me make this bigger so everybody can see it, um, is because there's a whole process we have to go through initially of scanning all the sites, um, bringing in your assessor data, and then results is, once we get through that process, we know who that owner is, we know if there are multiple sites, if they have multiple properties. But before that process, we don't, so we do charge address identification based on the number of listings that you have. Compliance monitoring is based on the actual property itself, so a hundred and two, that number one oh two. So once we've gone through this process, we know who that owner is, that they have multiple properties, or there are multiple sites, you know, we're gonna charge you for at that point, so we already know who they are. So that's kind of the preface of how we do the pricing, so I'll jump back and show you what it looks like from an annual perspective. Jump back over here. So address identification is forty-five dollars per listing per year, and then compliance monitoring is twenty-two fifty per property per year. So this is what it would look like from an annual perspective. So our address identification would be six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars per year. And then our compliance monitoring would be twenty-one sixty per year. Now, those fees are, um, all-inclusive, and they don't change. So what I mean by that is, um, anytime during the twelfth month period, if you have maybe a high season or special events, and the number of rental units or listings exceed, um, the contracted value, we're not gonna charge you anything additional, we'll still go through and go the same process, identifying them, um, sending out the letters, that whole process, that will never change. Uh, there's no, uh, installation fees, there's no ongoing maintenance. Um, that's all included, and then all upgrades and enhancements to our software are included as well. We spent twenty million dollars last year in R and D, and we had, um, six enhancements, and those are all included as part of that, that fee there. So a- any questions on the prices, it makes sense in how we break out the pricing?
Nope.
No questions, okay. So next thing I'll talk about is self-funding, so I know it's important, um, pretty much every municipality I talk to, it has to be self-funded, how do you fund the program? Ninety percent of our customers are funded through registrations. And what I mean by that is the number of short-term rental owners or hosts that we're able to identify, and then go through and push that registration process, and push them through to pay their registrations. That percentage that we uncover and then get them through that registration process, ninety percent of our customers are self-funded through that process. So it pays for itself. We have ten percent of our customers that we work with that have bans in place, and they're essentially chasing fines and going to court, and that typically won't fund our software. But if you do have a registration or business license in place, ninety percent of our customers are self-funded. Does that, does that make sense? Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Okay, um, before I leave, I know time's precious, and you've got on your agenda today. Is there any other questions before I leave? I will, um, I'll give Kelly, Kelly's got my information. Um, I know Linda Beaton has my information as well, too. Um, any questions come up afterwards, you can certainly reach out to me, call me, email me, I'll help you any way I can. Um, if there's anything that you need, just let me know.
I, I've got one question.
Absolutely.
So if, if we started with this, we could start with one, one element. Uh, in other words, we could, uh, uh, start off with the address identification.
Yes, exactly. Absolutely.
And just basically contract for that, and then determine whether or not we want
Sure.
do these additional incrementally?
Yeah, exactly, Michael, and that's the way it typically works, right? So, um, I always kind of push on the philosophy of a crawl, walk, run, especially if you just have a new ordinance that's coming out, because you don't wanna bite off more you can chew. And then from a financial perspective also, right, you don't wanna spend money where it's not needed. So, you know, my philosophy is to kind of start where you need to, so identifying the addresses, getting the data behind it, um, send out the letters yourself, or go through that process. Um, and then, you know, next year, you can kind of look back, and if, uh, you know, you're, you weren't as effective maybe as getting people registered, and the software's paid for itself, and maybe has extra funds to pay for compliance monitoring, then you can add compliance monitoring on the next year. So that's kind of, uh, you know, the way I look at it, right? You wanna spend your money wisely, but also, you know, um, kind of crawl, walk, run. You know, a lot of people sometimes, a lot of municipalities sometimes try to, uh, go too fast, and it's not as successful. Did that answer your question, Michael?
Yes, I have a follow-on. How long would it, would it take for your company to actually give us an accurate listing of those properties by address, uh, that would, would single out which ones were actually, uh, in different zones, in other words, which ones were in commercial properties, which ones were in condos?
Right, right.
So you would have an accurate list.
Yeah, so, um, if you decide to move forward with us, um, it takes four to six weeks to get up and running. Typically, four to six weeks, and I, I say that, I'd rather under-promise than over-promise, I have some customers that are done in two to three weeks, some, you know, take eight weeks, but generally, four to six weeks is the best practice. Did that answer your question, Michael?
Yes, it does, Bruce, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Um, any other questions before I leave and let you get back to your meeting?
Uh, I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
So if we start with the address identification, and then the following month, we wanna do the compliance monitoring,
Mm-hmm.
we don't have to wait, like, it's not gonna take another four to six weeks to do that, is it, or?
No, 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 so compliance monitoring is just, um, essentially the work behind that, we've already identified the addresses, the ready-go. That typically takes about a week or two. Um, it's just, uh, working on you, you and your team to craft the letters and have those letters inside of our system, so you can hit the send button, it's essentially, it's pretty quick.
Okay.
And then also, we could prorate it, so for example, if you decide after a couple of months, I'm gonna go ahead, compliance monitoring, add that, we can prorate it for, you know, ten months, add it to the existing contract.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, you're welcome, you're welcome, okay. Any other questions? Lot of good questions. Okay, well, I listen, I appreciate everybody's time today, and your time's valuable. Um, like I mentioned, if you have any questions at all, uh, um, Kelly can follow up with me, um, and I can answer those questions for you, feel free to reach out, I appreciate your time today, and thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, take care, everyone, thanks.
Council, do you want to? Are you back? Council, do you, do you want to direct staff to look into this and come back with a recommendation?
Yes, I think we should, because we're not capable, yeah.
I, I would ask Mr. Taylor, uh, if, uh, in, in his estimation, do we have the internal resources to do, uh, what this company is, is capable of? And if so, would it, is it cost-effective for us to try to do it internally, or to use a company like this? You're muted, I'm sorry.
We don't have the internal support to, to offer a service like this. I think the best way to, to go is find the company that we wanna deal with, and then, once we adopt our ordinance and a fee schedule, uh, adopt a fee schedule that's gonna support those modules that we wish to have. I know there's at least one other, uh, company out there that I've identified that does the same thing. And so, at that price, we're gonna have to, to conform with our purchasing policy, we're gonna have to try to find three similar and get some bids.
Okay. So that would be the next step, is to go out and, uh, and, and, uh, bid out the, the requirement?
Well, that, that could be one step, but I think, uh, concurrently with that, we have to get council's, uh, agreement on, on an ordinance. So we can, we can do those, keep those moving at the same speed.
I think, I think part of the challenge is that, you know, in order for us to really iron out the ordinance, you know, again, we almost need the data first. I mean, I think that's part of the challenge that we've experienced, is it's hard to say what the right number is if we don't know what the beginning number is.
Well, I understand that, but I, I don't think, you know, I, I think we can do both at the same time, we can move on concurrent pass, uh, and, and get that, get our bids received and contract with Granicus or another company, and at the same time be working with council to come up with the ordinance.
Okay.
Is everybody happy with that process?
I, I have a quick question. How much are we charging right now for the, the rental inspection for the certificate?
The only thing that, uh, that we're doing is the, the rental inspections are ninety dollars, uh, every three years.
For the, for the short-term rentals?
No, well, any, any rental.
Okay.
For a short-term, just.
We have nothing for, for short-term right now.
Okay, so if we, I, I'm just trying to figure this out, if we went with this company, it's like nine thousand dollars a year for them to identify the addresses and make sure that they're in compliance. Would it's, if we charged the short-term rentals a hundred and fifty-dollar fee, that would pay for it, pay for itself right there, I mean, there would be an overage of money, a surplus for the following year, right?
Right, yeah, if, if you're going to the assumption we have roughly a hundred that they know of, a hundred and, a hundred and fifty a year, that's, you know, that's a, that's fifteen thousand dollars annual, um, fees. And so that would support the modules, at least two of the modules that you, might be of interest, and so that could be our registration fee on an annual basis, as an example.
I, I don't see why we wouldn't take advantage of this company, because we don't have the capability to monitor all these rentals, especially if we're putting a cap on the vacation rentals. They'll be able to monitor that for us.
Right.
Mr. Taylor, did I, I thought I heard you say that we're required to get three bids?
Well, to comply with our purchasing policy, we are required to get three quotes based on, you know, roughly, if you use his number six, sixty-six hundred, use that as a base- based on, you know, roughly, if you use his number six, sixty-six-hundred, use that as a baseline. We're, we're going to need to get some other bids from other companies. And again, I know there's, I know of one other company that offers the same services and I, and I've had a discussion with that individual and saw that, how their software performed, so it'd be very similar. So we, we may be able to find another one, if not, we just go with the two.
Okay, so you're going to be working with that and getting back to us on your progress?
Yep.
Any other questions from council? Direction? Hearing none, we'll move on. Question, Mayor Prodan Samaski, we're going to kind of switch out a little bit. We're going to do discussion on Safe Belt building permits first tonight. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, our building official, I think he's still on the line here. Yes, Steve is on as well as Kelly Lindsay from Safe Belt. So I'm just going to leave it up to Steve, just to discuss how they handle their building permits and their philosophy behind it. So I know, I know there's been some questions about, do you need permits for a roof as an example? Or do you need a permit for signings? And, and even I've heard, you know, questions about, do you need a permit to replace a toilet? So, you know, Steve will go through that and really, you know, what the code says in terms of what is required for building permits. So Steve, if you can take it from here.
Good evening, council members, how are you tonight?
Good evening.
Good.
In regards to roofing siding and window permits, if you look at section one oh five of the code, it basically tells you in there what is required or more to the point is what is not required for permits. And roofing siding and windows is not exempt from permits. And there are, are also in the body of the code, other sections that refer to areas of those respectively, roofing siding and window permits on what has to happen to meet the code in installation of them. So is, I, at this point, I'll basically take questions on, on what your questions are. After talking about that, I did send out to FAD the requirements for permits at section one oh five for both residential and the building code at the, after the last meeting. And if you guys had copies, had gotten copies of that or not?
Council got copies of it, I?
I haven't seen it, I'm not sure that I've seen it.
I'm sure I've seen it, okay.
Oh, let me double-check, I thought that was included with, but let me double-check, if not, we can get it to you.
I have a question, Steve.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I am confused when I read state, the state code. What is considered maintenance? If I paint my house, is that maintenance?
Yes.
But if I put, if I replace siding, that's not maintenance?
No, that's not, there, there's code requirements that are required and there's installation instructions from manufacturers that are required to be followed to meet the codes.
I, I, I just have trouble understanding, I, I share some of the frustration that people have. For example, when I put a roof on, I know it's going to last twenty years. Then I'm going to have to replace it and I consider that maintenance, but according to their state code, that's not maintenance, is that correct?
That's correct. There are codes that you can't have more than two layers of roofing on to begin with. And it's actually, in the code, it tells you exactly how you, in our area, you have to have ice and water shield up so far from the inside, you know, exterior wall. There's different requirements for valleys, there's different requires for flashings, there's different requirements for all different types of roofs that you have to put on. As far as shingles, metal, shakes, there's a, there's a lot of different requirements. Contractors are required to be licensed to do roofs also. And the problem we run into, one of the big problems we run into when we're not following that system of, in the code is, is that we run into contractors that are doing it that are not licensed to do it. And in other jurisdictions that I've worked in, one of the biggest complaints I have had is new roofs being put on and then subsequently following up on leaking and stuff like that, that, you know, they didn't do flashing properly, they didn't put the ice and water shield on properly and other code violations like that, that are called out in the code.
I don't mean to be picky, but I'm just relating to you some of the, some of the things that I've heard or complaints that I've received. What about a bathroom? I replaced my toilet, do I need a permit?
If, technically, yes, if you replace your toilet, if you remove and replace the toilet and put it in a new one, you have to have a permit for that, for the simple reason is, is that now they have flush requirements for, monitor gallons for water that can be flushed and there are other items that are covered in that section. But I'm not out there looking for, you know, that part of the code. And I go into houses all the time and I know the toilet's been replaced and it's not something that we're looking for. If we happen to be in there and they're doing a bathroom remodel and stuff like that and they're replacing all the fixtures, then yes, they need permits. But if they're removing a toilet and putting it back in, they don't need a permit. And if they're doing a floor, they don't need a permit, if they're replacing just cabinet, they don't need a permit.
Okay, window replacement. I broke my window, I'm going to replace the window.
Yes.
Do I need a permit?
Well, what are you replacing, just the glass? Or are you removing the whole window and replacing the whole window?
Put in a whole new window.
If you're putting a whole new window in, yes, you are required to have a permit because there are energy issues that go along with that. Windows have to meet certain energy issues nowadays. And when they're installing, they have to be sealed in place. They have to be insulated properly and they have to have a certain amount of ice and water shield and, and water things put in to keep the water from getting inside the house. One of the biggest leaking problems in houses nowadays is actually through and around windows and doors. Because they're not properly flashed.
Does a contractor have to be licensed just putting in a window?
Yes, he does.
I, I have some questions. Okay, so if you're going into, say, a rental, for instance, and there's a bunch of violations, it needs this, it needs that, they're going to have to pull and it's blighted on top of that, they're going to have to pull several permits to rectify the situation?
That may be, go ahead.
So you're going to get through like two houses a year at that rate? I mean, that's, that's craziness to have, to pull a permit to replace a window, replace a toilet, fix a hole in a roof. I mean, nobody's ever going to fix these properties up at that rate.
If someone's just fixing a hole in a roof, that is repair. If they're not replacing and if they're not removing and replacing all the shingles, then that would be just a repair, so they wouldn't have to do that. I've been in many rental units at this time, a, a lot of them haven't passed and a lot of them are working on just cosmetic things that have to be replaced or smoke detectors that have to be replaced and things like that that are in, that are safety issues for the people that are living there. And as far as toilets go, I've been in many places where I had one rental unit where the people actually replaced the toilet themselves. I don't make them pull a permit after the fact or something like that. But the thing of it is, is that you can still go to the box store and buy toilets that are not code compliant.
I, I, I'm just floored, like, I think we have bigger issues than if the toilet is code compliant, like, I, have you seen these houses, like, I just don't even?
I agree with you a hundred percent. Houses are, are in really rough shape and I'm working with a, a lot of rental clients at this time right now to get some of them so that they've been upgraded. And a lot of them are just doing repairs at this point of, of things such as painting, you know, replacing some sofas and, and replacing some handrails that, you know, maybe need to be able to replace that, just the pieces of it done or boards replaced and decks, steps and stuff like that.
I just feel like there's bigger issues than to nitpick if they have a permit to put up siding to make the house look better.
I'm not nitpicking for that, alls I'm looking to do is create a safe environment for renters, health, safety and welfare of the general public is what we do and, and that's exactly what I'm looking at. I'm not making them pull permits for all of this stuff that, that, you know, doesn't, you know, into anything that's not required by the code. I have some stairs that go down into basements where they just don't, they didn't have a handrail on them at all and clients are going down there for such things as washers and dryers that are down there for the clients and I don't make them pull a permit for something like that.
I, I have another question, are you the, so are you the only one doing the inspections?
Yes, at this time.
Plus you give out the rental certificates for long-term and short-term rentals?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I, I just feel like that's a huge job for one person and I feel like it's going to take you a decade to get through just half of Manistee, seriously.
Yeah, I have additional resources, it, it, once things start moving forward to bring other people in and to help me out on that, so I don't have to worry about that portion of it. And now that the program is up and running in a better fashion than when we first started, things are starting to move forward in a regular fashion now and, and moving forward to get the certificates and everything out that we have already done inspections on.
I have, I have some questions. Um, I was looking at the checklist that you use to go over everything and since my prior life, which ended in January, for fifteen years in your real estate, used to having home inspectors go through homes all over the county. And one of the things they, they, they point out is asbestos and bromeculite insulation. And, and, and they're required in the rural areas to do a water test, water well septic evaluation. And I think it's only fair, we need to be concerned, I totally agree with you. We need to be concerned about the health, safety and welfare of everybody that lives in Manistee. But we're not looking for those things in our rental inspections. So if by faith you're, you, you rent a place to live, you don't know that some of these items are in the home and they can be, they can be remedied by the landlord. I mean, usually asbestos is found on the ductwork down in the basement off the furnaces. So, and bromeculite is, insulation, you usually find it in the attic. If the attic is closed off, then it's, it's encapsulated and it's not a danger basically.
Correct.
But I think the landlord needs to know that these things are there and we need to look for things like that. I've even thought about, maybe it should be required that we do a water test on a lot of, on these homes. Just maybe once every three years, a water quality test.
Some areas require that. Water tests every time a house sells, to have the wells tested or the water tested. But your city water system is tested all the time.
I, I know, but
Yeah.
the pipes, the old pipes leading into the house from the street.
Right.
That's a different story.
And as far as, you know, like you're talking about, yes, I've been working in the city since the seventies. And actually, I have looked at a lot of the ductwork and a lot of the piping, especially on a lot of the boilers where there's asbestos present. And if that's the case in the rental units, I have been telling them and working with them on them encapsulating those areas so that the public is not exposed to it or have it removed. So that's not something that we do and it's not something that we can make them do, but I can make them because of the health, safety issues of asbestos and that type of thing. I've seen it in multiple areas already in the city and I've talked to them about how they can encapsulate it to make their renters safe for the long term.
Right, and the, you know, and bromeculite has been commonly used in this area.
Right, and, and that's another, you're, you're exactly right, council member, Beaton. The bromeculite is in a lot of the places in the city and a lot of the places in the city still have knob and tube wiring existing. And that's another thing, I can open up the walls and see where this has been added to the, to the systems because knob and tube wiring is still in the code, but it can't be covered by insulation. So there's many problems within aspects to that, to these older homes that we're dealing with and there's still a lot of active, active knob and tube, but I can't make them change it. One thing that I've been helping them with is in the electrical part of it, they only have two wires running up, so a lot of them have open grounds in their kitchens and in their bathrooms. And the code does require those to be labeled as open grounds. I can't make them change it, so I don't make them change it. Unless they do remodeling or something like that, then they have to upgrade to a GFI-protected plug. But they still don't have to put in the wiring to make that a, a compliant GFI plug. It still can have an open ground on it, it'll still be compliant with the code.
Well, can we add something like asbestos and bromeculite?
Say that again?
Can we add, looking for asbestos and bromeculite?
Well, the council can add anything they want that's more restrictive than what the code requires. But we, at this point, we can only do what the code says that we can do unless there's something for us to follow in, through and, and having a reason to be able to be looking for something other than what the code requires at this time.
Well, I, I'm going to push, I, I think it's worth pushing for because I do worry about the health and safety of residents.
I don't disagree with you, there's a lot of, yeah, I know, I don't disagree with you. But the code is, is a minimum requirement. So we're not pulling out and making them do things that we can't make them do. But we do our cognizant of the health, safety and welfare of, of what's going on.
I, can I ask a question? If we can add stuff that you'd like to look for, can't we take away some of the permits?
Everything that you guys have talked about is I look for in these homes anyhow because it's a health issue. And so if there's anything that's exposed, I let them know. But I can't, I can't do a destructive test to see if this stuff is in there because the code doesn't allow me to do it.
Right, but what I'm saying is if we add stuff to the code, can't we, can't we add that, you know, they don't need a permit to do the siding or the permit to replace the window?
No.
Okay, I tried, I tried. Anything to do with safety.
Yeah, it, yeah, you, you, you can't preclude somebody from a, a required permit.
Elaborate.
Kelly's going to come on and say something right now too. So I'll let her talk to you a minute.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sullivan. I wanted to say that the reason we can't take away, say, a siding or a window or roofing permit is due to the fact that that's under the state building code. And what we're discussing right now is your local rental ordinance enforcement. So that piece is locally controlled by you folks and the other is controlled by the state. So there's, there's the difference there.
Right, I knew that, I was just trying because I, I- Right, I knew that. I was just trying because I I feel like we have way bigger issues than than the permits for the siding and and the little things like that. I feel like there's other things that take precedent over that.
We agree with you.
But I knew that, but I knew that.
Yeah, we agree with you. Um, and at the same time, we're hired to enforce the code for you. So we have to follow that.
Okay.
Nice try. So I I've got a question. Uh, who sets the fees on the permits for things that we did not have in in? So prior to SafeBuild, we did not have um a a structure in place to be able to uh uh provide a permit for window replacement or siding. So who set the fees for this? And can you uh tell me what they are? I tried finding it. I couldn't find it online.
The fees were um established um when SafeBuild came in. You were given a copy of the fee schedule that you guys approved um when when SafeBuild came in to do the inspections. And and basically what um that fee schedule follows is the uh fees uh from the state of Michigan also.
So what is the fee to replace a single window in a home?
Well, there again, it depends on the number of inspections. And if if I could do it all in one inspection, um I could probably do it for a hundred dollars, but generally the fee's gonna be two hundred dollars for something like that, two inspections.
See, that's that's part of the challenge that that people come to me and complain is that they have a hundred dollar window and there's a two hundred dollar inspection fee for do you for do-it-yourselfers. It doesn't seem, doesn't seem reasonable to to the the outside uh do-it-yourselfer in Manistee.
Yes, I understand. I understand you uh completely. Um, but we are still held uh um and checked by what the code tells us to do. Um, and that's what we follow.
Okay. So does the code actually say there is a requirement or that it's just not exempt? I that that was one of the main things that you mentioned.
In the information that I sent you, the code tells you what is not required for permits. So the code basically specifically lays out what products and what things you can do without permits.
Okay, I got one more question on the window again. So if you have a house that's, you've sent a letter for blight and it's got a broken window, you're gonna have them pull a permit to fix that window in order to sign off on them? Like, nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna fix their stuff. I'm not gonna pay.
No, I'm not gonna make them pull a permit to fix that window because if all they're replacing is the glass or as part of the sash and that they don't need a permit for that. They don't need a permit to repair that window. They can
I don't understand why you would need a permit if you're putting in the same size window. Like, you're not changing the structure of the house. You're not putting in a bigger window, you're not putting in a smaller window and filling it in. If you're putting the same size window in, I think that's what people are having a hard time understanding is if you're putting in the same window.
It's more
Because most of the time
Go ahead.
Most of the time you're putting in, like, some of these houses have older, single-pane windows. So ninety-five percent of the time, they're gonna replace it with an energy-efficient window that has a screen that's functional.
Right, and and that's exactly what um we need to make sure that they comply with putting in the right type of uh window that is energy-efficient to meet today's code requirements. And also that it's installed properly so that it doesn't leak because leaking around windows is one of the biggest um problems that homes have. Um, and that destroys uh the structural part that is holding that home in check.
There's a lot of things that are destroying homes that are Okay, so if they, if you've seen the window and it was installed properly, can you sign off on not having the permit?
Well, if somebody's already installed the uh Yeah, if somebody's already installed the window, I'm probably not gonna make them pull a permit anyhow, but I cannot circumvent what those law tells me to do in in having uh someone come to me if they wanna replace the windows in their home. Um, I I can't pick apart the um parts of the code and say that I'm not gonna um you know, make them pull a permit for this section when it specifically doesn't say that it can be exempted.
I'm just, I'm just confused on why it doesn't fall under repair and maintenance.
Well, that, that's something that um that over the years has changed from um uh time past and a lot of it has been driven by our government. Um, uh, the energy part of the uh code is what's specifically because windows is um our industry unfortunately was one of the biggest uh uh users of energy. Um, past the auto industry and and look at the sanctions they put on them to come into um play to get them to be energy-efficient. Well, they're just getting to uh our industry at this point and and making us move further ahead with energy efficiency uh more and more of of homes all the the time.
Well, I feel like we're gonna have a big problem with people cleaning up a lot of these houses because if they've gotta pull, you know, twelve hundred dollars in permits to do five hundred dollars worth of work, it's not gonna happen.
Well, that's a, I think, a little bit high on what it is. Um, we're talking about a uh one or two hundred dollars for the, for the whole house.
If they do it at the same time, right?
If they do them all at the same time, yes.
Okay, but a lot of people don't have that extra money laying around to do all the repairs at one time, so if somebody's actively working on their house, I mean, you should, they should get a pass to where they pull a two hundred dollar permit and give you a list of what they're gonna fix, so they don't, you know, if they can't fix something for the following month, they're not charged another two hundred dollars to
Right, but when they, if they pull a permit for a window or and they're planning on replacing more, a per- a permit is good for up to six months and can be extended for another six months beyond that.
And that covers everything. If they wanna do the window, if they wanna do the roof.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, they they don't have to pull individual permits for each thing. So if somebody comes in and does a remodel and they replace the siding, the windows, the roof, and they do a bunch of work inside, it's all under one permit.
What if they need an extension on that six months?
Um, that's not a problem.
Okay.
At the end, at the end of a a six-month period, um if they can come to me with a reason, a good reason to extend it, um, then we'll extend it for six months. But if you look at how the inspections go on houses anyhow, in the residential code, um from every inspection an inspector does, say you've got mechanical work going on, you got plumbing work going on, um, all the permits in residential renew for a six-month period from each inspection. So, so technically, if if you learn to work it all right, you could carry a permit out for quite a long time. And be still be
I would, I'm just curious. Like, I am the last person that wants to extend anything out. Like, I want everything done like yesterday, but I'm just
Yeah.
For the people that have multi
Right.
Multi-homes here that need a ton of work.
So there's provisions in the code to cover that.
Okay.
You know, to to allow them to uh get a permit like that and and work forward through that.
Kind of going back to your rental inspection and the what was provided to us. I also didn't see anything on heating. Uh, when you inspect, do you ensure that the heating is appropriate, that uh rooms heat properly? Uh, I know that I have uh in in another volunteer capacity have had people complain that their homes are are terribly cold, that they don't have any heat in certain rooms. Um, and that basically they can't get get the unnecessary repairs and requirements to get the home to heat the way it should. Or it's so exorbitant to heat the home um that it's, they basically have to have it colder than it should be.
Yes, and I I agree with you on that. Um, I do check, check that and I ask the um renters um how their comfort level is in the home and I've had some that have talked to me about that. And so there is some uh rental units right now that I'm waiting for them uh to make some changes in them systems to try and make the heat more even. And the code does have requirements in there um for what temperature has to be maintained in the house. Um, so far inside the outside wall and so far off the floor. And I do have um a much more elaborate um uh code uh fixes that I go with than what I give you. Those are just general, a general list of looking at it. And I could send, I could send you exactly what I'm sending out right now. And I do it more for education purposes because this is new to everybody in the city. And um so I give them the whole section of everything that I'm sending right now that covers the code and the International Property Maintenance Code that pertains to them. And um so that they can read the whole um section of all the codes um from electrical, mechanical, plumbing and the structure, um the outside, inside. Uh, and um the requirements for when you guys have uh made for the screens and um and for the the heat, you know, from uh uh September fifteenth to May fifteenth and then for the screens from May fifteenth to September fifteenth. So I could send that to you so you guys could read that. It's a little, it's way more comprehensive than what um the uh list that I uh sent you earlier today that they had to, for you guys to look at. And that's what I'm sending out because I know that everybody um needs to have an understanding of of what we're doing and what we're looking for.
Yes, I appreciate you sending that out. It'd be much appreciated.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Taylor? Are you there?
Yes.
So our, our fees were set to cover the cost of SafeBuild, is that correct?
Correct.
So we have some control over those fees if we want to change them?
Well, they cover the fees, but we've adopted the state's co- or state's fee schedule for a a couple of reasons. Number one, it saved us from developing our own and it's consistent with the prior inspectors, which were the state. So that's a fee schedule that is uh known uh by the contractors and homeowners. So there was some continuity. And then the fees that are collected, there that they certainly do cover the uh cost of the inspection services and currently there's a split between the city and SafeBuild on the fees.
Any other questions for SafeBuild? I have one. Currently, how many properties are um basically registered or enrolled in the inspection program total?
Slightly over eleven hundred.
And that's in the city?
That's correct.
Does that, is that just, that's basically rentals of all types?
That's correct. That's that's rentals of all types, long-term and short-term.
Do you have a, an idea of how many of that eleven hundred are short-term?
Um, not at this time, but um through our um process right now, we are making that determination because we are having them listed as short or long-term rentals at this time. So we do, um, it's gonna take us a cycle to go through before we know exactly that number. But yes, it's in the process and we are working on that.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I I have a last question for Steve. Of that total, that eleven hundred, aren't a lot of those condos and say like um Century Terrace and Harborview and um couple of the other larger apartment buildings around town?
Yes, I believe that there's probably a lot more um the short-term rentals out there than what they've discovered at this point. Um, and um yes, there are a lot of uh con- condominiums and and townhouses um that are short-term uh and long-term rentals.
Oh, I I meant total rentals.
Oh, yes.
When you said the eleven hundred. I mean, there's a lot of units.
Oh, yes. I've been doing a lot of inspections in those.
Pardon me?
Yes, I've been doing a lot of inspections in
Okay.
Condominiums and in the uh townhouses, yes.
Councilmember Bean, I would note that the um units under the control of the Housing Commission are not part of the rental inspection program.
Okay.
They're they're uh inspected by uh their their cells through HUD.
Okay, so they're exempt, but there's still a lot of condos and townhouses. But thanks.
I have a quick question. Out of the eleven hundred, how many have you actually inspected so far and how many haven't been in compliance or been up to code?
Well, that's a really good question and um at this point, you know, I've probably um uh, we've had about two dozen, uh maybe three dozen that's been inspected. And um I would say that about ten percent of them have passed and I'm waiting for work to be done on the other percentage.
Okay, so seriously, you're gonna be like ninety by the time you get through this then if if it's only three dozen that have been inspected and we have eleven hundred. Like, I, seriously, I am not a math person at all, but I feel like that's gonna take you a long time and then you're gonna have to start over again with that other cycle. Like, I don't understa- I can't wrap my head around how you're gonna keep up with it.
Well, once, of course, you know, we're behind a little bit, you know, because of the COVID issue. So we came into uh uh this a full cycle behind, so we're really working on two cycles right now. So um the third cycle isn't gonna come uh do until twenty twenty-two. So the ones that I'm working on right now are cycle one and cycle two. And um we're in the process right now of of getting that up and and I probably have about another fifteen on my uh um radar to do right now and I I have to call them and set up the times to do them. But um last week um in one day, I'd done six rental properties and
But I feel like even even with COVID, like some of these, you could just stand on the sidewalk and see that they're not in compliance, so I just
I I do not
I feel like it's a huge job for just one person to take and I don't know how everybody else feels, but I I see these houses on a daily basis and I and it bothers me that, you know, some of these people that are aren't in compliance and they want, you know, extra time to fix their house up, even though it's been like that for years and they're still collecting rent from their tenants, that's a problem. Like, they are the problem and it needs to be like addressed like immediately, like I feel like people that are, you know, living in squalor, they gotta wait till the next cycle for somebody to come around and see that they're you know, living like this, but yet their landlord is still collecting rent. I mean, that's
I don't disagree with you, Councilmember Sullivan, but um I'm in the process of working through them so that we can get this done. And so that we can get these all in compliance. And um we do have a lot of them that aren't in compliance right now, but it will it will come to fruition and follow through with this and um make the city a lot safer um rental properties. And um this has been a process that's been going on with the city for uh however many years you've been in the rental program. And I just don't think it's been looked at um, you know, from a safety standpoint, but that's what I do is I look at these things from a safety standpoint because I want these people to be living in a safe environment for them, their family and their children. And also for the landlords and and that's, it's getting educated in them also so that they understand that that they have um uh inherent responsibilities that they that that they have um uh inherent responsibilities that they need to take on if they're gonna rent these units out.
Well, you're gonna be Superman then because I I can't see how you're gonna get through all of it. I really don't. Like, it's overwhelming to me, and I don't even do this.
Councilmember uh Sullivan, if I could just comment, the city's contracted with uh SafeBill to provide this service. And um if, you know, if if Steve isn't able to handle it all by himself, and that's a discussion live with SafeBill about uh and using some additional personnel to get us uh where we need to be because it's it's their contract to fulfill. And even though I, you know, the opinion that Steve can probably get it done, um, if he's not, then that's a discussion the city needs to have with SafeBill, and they're gonna have to come up with a plan to fulfill their contract.
And and we've already looked, we've already looked into that uh aspect of it too. And I have other inspectors inspectors that are at my disposal to be able to do that. And um uh once we move forward and and have this going um in a smooth operation, which I believe we're pretty much there right now, uh then we can move a lot quicker in doing what we need to do.
I have a question um for Kelly. If we move up the inspections to every year or every two years, would you guys be able to handle that? I know it's kind of hard now with it being every three years.
I can, I can answer. You want me to an- I'll answer that for you. Yes, that's something that we can handle. It's it's not a problem. Um, and I I heard um one of your uh uh council members um at the last meeting talk about having me involved with you guys to sit down and and look at um alternatives, you know, to try and see where to go with the one, two, or three-year cycle that you're on at this point, and I think that's a good idea. I think I have a lot of input um professionally to help you guys understand and where to go with this and to uh try and keep the um owners that are following the code at this point, you know, on a three-year cycle and possibly looking at um doing partial, maybe one and two-year uh cycles on some of the ones that really need to have some work done on them to try and get them into compliance.
Okay. So to answer your question.
I would like the flexibility to do that for the ones that are totally in compliance, the ones that are struggling. That would help.
Yeah. Having some kind of incentive for the landlords to be in compliance is certainly a positive thing. You know, again, we wanna not just uh, you know, have to, you know, threaten them, but we wanna wanna have, you know, compliance from a from a positive and a and a uh collaborative environment. So whatever you can come up with to make it, you know, and incentivize, uh, I think would be important, even if it's, you know, again, making it more cost-effective, uh, whatever we can do from their side, I think it would be helpful for us.
Correct. And and there are, I have been in some really nice rental units out there. So they're out there. I I'm not saying that that's the majority, but um there are some out there that I I believe that the three-year cycle is gonna work fine for them. Um, but I know that there are others that, you know, that it's not gonna work, you know, very uh good to have that three-year cycle at this point. But I don't think it's something you might, I think it's something you really wanna look at taking um a hard look at and and maybe not take three-year cycle completely out. But uh, just like uh Councilmember Samansky uh said is to um keep it in uh to incentivize uh, you know, the uh clients to do what is right for their um rental units.
Do we have any other questions for Steve? Thank you very much for being on the hot seat, Steve.
Oh, no problem anytime. I don't mind it. And and you you all can um get ahold of me anytime. I'm I'm more than happy to meet with you and speak with you one-on-one about this um at any time and in any place. All you have to do is just ask me. I'm I'm available to you anytime.
Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to discussion on residential rental ordinance. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, um, as council is aware, we have uh, it was approved on a first reading and then um tabled on the second reading. So we have a, we have a uh ordinance that council can act on if they wish in a in a regular meeting. I staff just needs some direction from council on what you wanna do. Do we wanna put this on an agenda and for the second reading, or do we want, does council want to make some changes to it?
Council?
Did we make the change to uh have it at Steve's discretion, whether it should be uh inspected every year or every three years if he?
No, there was, there was no decision from council.
I think that would be a good idea to to have it. If if you know, if you don't, if you pass it the first time, then you're good for three years, but if you don't, then you have to get it inspected again the following year.
Though the agreement was that we were gonna meet with Steve or with the landlords and and discuss this rental thing. Uh, I thought, I think that's where we left it the last time.
Steve says he has some suggestions. I think we should get his suggestions and put them in to the ordinance and see what he says. And I like the idea of incentivizing too. So if there's some way we can get a guy that can pass on the first shot and get a three-year permit and an incentive for that, I'd like to hear what that might be as well.
Yeah, and and honestly, there there may, you know, I I was thinking that maybe we could have some other incentives out there, and I'm not quite sure exactly how we would go about it, but to uh maybe uh, you know, with uh reducing taxes or or doing some other things so that properties, you know, that landlords have have some encouragement to make major changes. Uh, if they're going to be replacing the the heating system or upgrading the electrical uh, you know, again, I don't know, I'm not an expert on that side, but uh anything that we can do from a city to encourage people to improve the properties for our renters, I think is is worth looking at. Uh, I know that it wouldn't necessarily be part of this, but I think it's in it's something that we probably want to at least address somewhere along the line.
Well, I I'm not sure where this fits in, but I think we also talked about uh well units that um there was trash in the yards and uh unlicensed vehicles and it, you know, a a lot of things were just loose around the property. I I think if the uh, i- if it's okay to ask the uh Steve and his inspections to make a note loaded note of that, that's really against our blight ordinance ordinances, and and that should be identified and turned over to the blight officer in that district. I don't know how to tie that on in, but I am concerned about the appearance of some of these rentals.
And I thought we had in the ordinance that they had to follow the blight ordinance, and they had to uh show proof of homeowner's insurance, and then Steve could say, you know, whether it needs a one-year inspection or a three-year inspection.
Right.
I thought that's where we were at with this. Like, I don't think, I don't think adding an incentive for like a tax incentive is a good idea because a lot of these landlords don't even live in the city, so I mean, that's gonna open up a huge can of worms for somebody that's lived here their entire lives, but they can't afford to, you know, side their house, but the guy that doesn't live here gets a tax incentive, so he can side his house that he doesn't live in. I mean, that's, I think that's a, that's gonna open up way too many problems.
I don't think it's been as long in the ordinance at this time either. We need to talk to Steve and see what Steve says about one, two, and three-year inspections and simplify it.
I was, I was gonna suggest that I would, that I would offer to meet with Steve and go and and find out what his thoughts are on it, and then we'll bring it back to the June work session for council's further discussion.
Well, I would like, I could, would you mind, Mr. Taylor, if you could ask him about blight? If it if it's a blighted piece of property and there's junk in the backyard that is just stuff, um, and it's and it's, it looks bad, I think it should be brought to um it's it's against our ordinance, and it should be looked at.
Linda, didn't they, Linda, didn't they bring that up once before, and he said he could work with the chief?
I think he's.
Okay, if, I just wanna make sure that happens. That's.
I think it's in there. Like, if the property is blighted, then they're out of compliance, and they don't get their certificate, is how we worded it.
Yeah, I've, I've made that, I've listed three things that to start the conversation with Steve, one of which is blight. So um, we'll, we'll discuss that.
I think that we also need to discuss it quickly and get it on the agenda because we've been stalling on it for quite some time now.
I'm curious as if a person doesn't pass and they say, oh, he did it a year. What happened in that year? Did they have to come into compliance in that year? Who follows up on that? And when do you actually lose your permit to rent if you don't stay in compliance? That's something I don't, I don't know what the answer to.
And and my my follow-on to that is, what do we do with the people that are in that apartment? If we say, okay, we pulled your permit, now where do they go? You know, are we gonna, you know, again, I guess they go over to Echo is Love and they get a tenth.
Oh, that'd be up to the landlord.
Hmm. So.
Where are we at? Mr. Taylor, do you have enough information to move forward? Uh yet another suggestion to us, the next work session?
I think I have plenty to work with.
Any other questions? Any other, anything else on this subject?
And one, just one last thing. I apologize for not getting uh out to council that information that Steve had provided me. That'll be uh, check your email first thing tomorrow morning. It'll be there.
Good, thank you. I don't hear anything else. I'm all ready to adjourn.
Uh, I have a question. Um, and I don't, so I am confused on tomorrow night. Like, I would like to know, like, who's asking what questions? And then it says on the agenda that after the last interview on Thursday, that we decide who we'd like to, you know, negotiate a contract with. Um, I feel that's kind of odd. Like, don't we need time to, like, soak the last two days in and go over every interview? I feel like that's rushing it. I don't understand why we can't make a decision on the following Tuesday.
Mr. Taylor, any input?
I mean, that's just, you know, we're doing it to try to keep this process moving forward. Um, we thought, you know, the information is fresh in your mind. Um, and you, you know, we thought that was sufficient time to uh consider the applicants. Uh, it, you know, if you push it back, it just delays the hiring and.
But what if each one of us has a different person, like, we can't decide right then and there on the spot, a?
Well, I think that that's how you, you're just gonna have to reach consensus on who who you want.
So we could be there till midnight, reaching a consensus?
Any.
I'm just confused, like, I've never done this before, and I don't wanna, like, go in there blind and be like, oh, well, I'm question number seven on page four. Let me figure out if I know how to pronounce these words real quick. Like, I, I don't wanna go in there and I almost swore. I don't wanna go in there and not be prepared.
Well, I I had a conversation with the mayor and and um his thoughts were that we we talked about it was that at the beginning of the meeting, he he just says we're starting out with, I'm just gonna say Councilman Bachman, and then it goes around the room until all the questions are exhausted.
But are we going in order of the questions, or are we just picking a random question?
You go in order of the questions. So again, if if Councilmember Bachman was the first, he's got number one, whoever's sitting next to him has number two, and then down the line, and right back to Councilmember Bachman until we've exhausted all the questions.
Okay. Just don't like to be unprepared.
Councilmember Sullivan, that's the way we did it last time when I was, when we hired Ted. And it seemed to work fairly well. Everybody had a chance for input and just some follow-up. When we go to the follow-up questions, any council member will have a chance to do a follow-up question if they so desire.
Okay.
Keeping in mind, there is a time limit. We're trying to do these before midnight. We don't wanna pass over into the next day, so.
Okay, I'm just stressed out. I don't like to be unprepared for things, so I just wanna.
I understand. I've read the, all the questions three times myself uh to make sure that I can pronounce all the words correctly. I understand.
I can't remember what I did three hours ago, so I mean, I can't.
You're gonna do just blind. We'll get.
Okay.
We've got a long ways to go to blight, to to break the planning commissions meetings that go into the next day. They go past midnight.
Yeah, their meetings are two days long.
They tune for the twentieth of May. That one may break all kinds of records.
I think it will too.
First, yeah. Anybody else have anything else? Sign on. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. See you tomorrow night at six o'clock. At the Lambs Dell, be sure, be sure to remember to send in your health questions. Make sure that.
Are we all gonna wear masks too for this?
Yes, we have to wear a mask, my understanding.
And and you can't wear your pajamas.
I know. It's looking in my closet trying to figure out what to wear.
Have a good evening, everybody. We're adjourned. Thank you.